Here. I hope we're on, I don't know where the thing is, but. Only believe we're on.
Want me to go down there and check?
No, I don't know what it will be on the.
You're turning on the.
For the TV, but I'm I'm sure we're.
That's fine.
I'm sure we're being filmed. Uh, six oh five P M., we call a meeting to order. Um, unfortunately, we don't have a flag in this office, so um, we'll be skipping the Pledge of Allegiance.
There's a small little flag right there.
Okay, let's do it.
That's yeah.
I can't see, okay, I see it.
Right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, before we get started, I just kinda wanna pull the board, I've kinda made some changes to uh the way we're gonna be working the agenda. I would cons- like to consider public input first and last. Uh, that way there if anybody's here instead of waiting till nine o'clock at night for their public input, they can come early, give their public input and and move on and uh, so what do you guys think about that?
Um.
Yeah, okay, that's good. That being said, is there any public input? None, okay, inspectors' reports?
Okay, um, I hate to say this, but it's been quite kinda quiet, and we'll probably have a hundred calls tomorrow. Um, most of my calls are about wildlife, that they're out about doing their things. And I did get a call today from somebody that was in Berkeley that has an issue in Berkeley, but then found an issue in town that we will be taking care of tomorrow. Over on Lewis Street.
What street?
Lewis Street.
Wow.
So, I'll be heading to Lewis Street tomorrow.
Is that to do with the detention on?
Well, I will talk to them about that too, this is about a horse that's awful skinny that we've, myself and the M S P C have been after for a while, and we thought we had it taken care of, but apparently we do not, so I'll have to go back up there.
Okay. Okay. Okay, sir?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright.
I have, um.
Well, that's right.
Uh, yeah, I'm still workin', I'm still working as the food inspector, um, no, no housing issues going on, uh, for the food inspections, um, still working on the first round of this this year. Uh, it should be done by June thirtieth, the fiscal year.
Okay. Now, another, I can do that under correspondence, I suppose, we'll save that till the end. Uh, it's a pleasure of the board, I'd like to kinda skip around and do describe priorities. And since uh, tobacco control officers here, Marilyn Edge and Selectmen Zographus, who was working on some of the bylaws regarding tobacco control, uh, since there's discrepancies in some of the old Dayton general bylaws, uh, conflicting with our tobacco uh regs and conflicting with the state. So, uh, I put together a little package that I I think you all have. I didn't realize this, but this was first put into the general bylaws in two thousand and two. And sorry to say, I probably never paid a whole lot of attention to this particular article a- as an article. Uh, because most of the other articles within Dayton general bylaws all have a fee for the most fine. But this, if you read this article here, it seems to be applicable to the bylaws, article by article, that are in the general bylaws. Until you go down to the fee schedule, then it starts talking about tobacco, which kinda threw me off and threw Selectmen Zographus off, I think, too. Uh, so, go into the next page. And in two thousand sixteen, there was a slight change uh made by someone, I guess, Board of Selectmen, I I assume. Uh, which the changes in section one, right after whoever violates any precision of these provision of these bylaws, then the addition was, or any rule or regulation of any municipal office or board or department that was added. And in section two, uh, second sentence, right after this article, that town bylaws, rules and regulations were were added. So it was, it was like a very minor change.
Okay.
However, the fees didn't get straightened out.
I can actually speak to that. Last year, we adopted rather than the four different regulations, oh, we we adopted four different C M Rs. That we we would be adding fines to or non criminal disposition.
Hmm.
And um, the selectmen went to s- uh, seek, um, they had questions to town council on how to word it. And it was supposed to be, first fine was a hundred dollars, two hundred and three hundred, and I think that's where.
Are you talking about tobacco, or are you talking about the articles within the general bylaws?
Well, this is, this is exactly what they, yeah, 'cause this is what they adopted, um, at at this point in time, six thirteen, two thousand sixteen. Um, and I think they included the tobacco at the same time.
Okay, so this is, if if that's when the this third and fourth violations where it mentioned suspension of the tobacco permit, if that's when that was put in, in two thousand sixteen, in this particular document, in your bylaws, it doesn't belong there. Because non criminal disposition is only about fines, it's not about suspensions.
Correct, yep.
So there shouldn't be anything in your non criminal disposition section that talks to a suspension.
That's why.
Well, I I agree with that now, the Board of Selectmen, and I'm glad you're here, are the are the ones that have to look at the non criminal disposition along with the other articles that are in the general bylaws that have their own uh sets of fines. Now, you you've sent it, there's a generalization here that all articles within the general bylaws uh are hit with this fine, which they're not. Um, I think.
Things have specific targets, right?
I think you can simply, well, you gotta review this, but as far as this board is concerned, I think if we took out the words suspension and tobacco, that would make it right and not be in conflict with our two thousand thirteen tobacco regs, which are within state law.
Yes, okay, so so there there, but there's two different things going on here.
Correct.
One is that even this first violation as a warning is not up to state law.
That's, yeah, can Inspector Bernardo, that's our concern these worries.
Are you talking tobacco or other articles?
Anything.
Yeah, tobacco first, yes.
Tobacco first.
Yes.
But there's no warning in mass state law.
And in any general general law.
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not an attorney.
And even in the ones, even in the ones we adopted back then, somehow the word, the word written warning got in there, see, what was supposed to be one hundred, two hundred.
Two, three hundred.
What I'd like to see happen going forward is that anything to do with tobacco fines stay in the regs
Mm-hmm.
and not in the general bylaws.
That, well, that's good, and then, once we get this whole thing straightened out, then we can move from non criminal disposition into health, for the health order, which eliminates this whole.
Right.
Yes.
And we can do that after July first, or after they straighten us out, whenever that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to probably meet.
That's a whole other meeting.
Do you understand what we're?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure you do.
Okay, so now I do know that Brett spoke to, via email, Attorney G J Wilson, who writes the regs for tobacco for the state. He works for the Mass Municipal Association.
Uh-huh.
And he gave you some direction.
He's in, yeah, we spoke on the phone, he was very helpful.
On what to do next. He was a great guy.
Hmm.
Um, so, the way he explained it to me was that the Board of Selectmen had to vote to bring your non criminal disposition up to the level of state law first. And then any changes that were gonna be made in addition to that had to go on the town meeting order for the fall. Am I right about that?
That is, that is.
Is that what he said? That's what he told me, that's what I understood when I spoke to him. And after I spoke to you yesterday, I spoke to him again. Because going forward, I mean, we're under, I'm under contract to continue working in Dayton.
Mm-huh.
Um, and we have, so inspections.
They're coming up, right?
Inspections are coming up, or uh, inspections continue, and there's not a lot of fines issued for suspe- on on the inspection side, but compliance checks with sales to minors are coming up, and we've been issuing tickets under the regulation. Now, since this is.
The twenty thirteen regulation?
Yes.
So there's a fine right off the bat?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, first offense is a hundred dollars.
And you told me you didn't have a copy, so I brought.
No, I I calmed it.
I brought.
In my office.
Yeah, I heard that, right?
Yeah, Matt, do you need a copy?
Uh, no.
Of the regulation?
No.
The whole thing?
It's the whole thing.
You only got a piece of.
I only have a piece of.
Yeah, we'll keep it, yeah.
Alright, yeah, so I have enough, Ross, do you need another copy?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, I'm I'm, I want to do another copy as well. So, so what Attorney Wilson suggested we do as opposed to eliminating compliance checks altogether for the months it's gonna take before this is resolved by the selectmen and then goes to on the warrant in the fall is that we would do our regular work, do our regular compliance checks, and if there were any first time violators, they should be issued a warning under your non criminal, as opposed to the hundred dollar fine under the regulation.
That was his best recommendation, I'm sure.
That was his recommendation, he said that because if we issued a hundred dollar fine after this has all come to light, and we know that this is an issue in your bylaw, then anybody who was issued a hundred dollar ticket going forward, not the ones we've already issued, going forward, would be able to come and say, you can't issue me a hundred dollar ticket, our town bylaw says it's gonna be a warning.
Yeah.
So after, since we're on TV tonight, so.
Since we're on TV, you know, in complete transparency, so.
Well, it was an oversight by a lot of people going forward, I think, uh, since.
Right, so going forward, we're gonna correct it, I mean, the selectmen are are charged with the task to, because it's a bylaw, to to get it straightened out on their end, and then, once that's straightened out, then we can go forward with the the existing regulation, which is not illegal.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's been a, it's a vetted document, regulation, for the health regulation. Um, and while that's happening, we can have a conversation about whether or not we wanna continue with non criminal disposition or eliminate the tickets altogether on the regulation and go with the Board of Health order. And Attorney Wilson said that he or Attorney Savara, Cheryl Savara.
Okay.
Could come to a future meeting and talk about the pros and cons of doing that.
Okay.
The state tobacco program is trying to to move away from non criminal dispositions because some of these town bylaws, and we're talking three hundred and fifty one communities across the state, your original bylaws will go back to two thousand and two, lots of things have changed. Over that.
Miss Edge, um, I'm really glad you're here, thank you so much, I'm I'm sure the board will help appreciate it, and it's nice to finally meet you, since we talked a lot over email. Um, in terms of the Board of Health's responsibility regarding, and I'm only talking about the non criminal disposition that's in the bylaw as written.
Okay.
Do, what does the Board of He- Board of Selectmen need to do in terms of the warrant? Do we need to amend the article and remove the words tobacco and then keep it as is with the warning?
No, you need to amend this article on non criminal disposition.
Mm-hmm.
You need to remove the by, the, uh, the written warning piece.
Yep.
And make it first offense a hundred dollars.
Yep.
Second, two hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Three, third, uh, three hundred dollars, and remove anything that has to do with tobacco. So it would strictly be the fines, first offense one.
If we do that.
And no timeframes, right?
That's incorrect.
Uh, well, the timeframes would be.
Well, this is, this would be strictly from the way I understood it from Attorney Wilson, this would be strictly of Board of Selectmen vote.
Stating.
Okay.
So it has to be put on an agenda that they're voting to bring your non criminal disposition in your bylaw, or on page sixteen, up to the level of state law.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking at, just to.
Right. Yep, but the tobacco, the tobacco language in here shouldn't be in here to begin with.
The only. True, agree, the only, and and I agree with the changes that need to be made in order to make it a uniform compliant code. My issue is, if it was voted by people as a bylaw, then I think if you amend it, that also needs to be on the warrant.
On the town warrant, right.
Yeah, and voted by the people again, and just we would explain, we were cleaning it up, et cetera.
Yes. Exactly, so, so, but the first part of that, to get to that point.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
You have to vote as a, as a board.
Oh, yes, yes.
To make the changes.
Correct, correct.
And then vote.
And commit to putting it on the warrant, correct, absolutely.
To put it on the warrant, on the next warrant.
That's a, that's totally me, okay, I understand now.
Yeah. Yep.
Do you have any hold on the warrant, please?
It's for the fall, yeah, it'll be a special, yeah.
Okay, so, so what I'm telling you right now is, all of this, anything that says, Ian, suspension of tobacco,
Yeah.
and there's four violations of more things out here, this is all gonna go, from the non criminal.
Yep.
Now, the problem with that is, it leaves a lot of other articles within the general bylaws in conflict with that, 'cause I'm looking at one now, building permits.
So.
Any person who violates any position, provisions of the bylaws shall be punished by a fine of no more than twenty dollars.
Right.
So, will we go on a hundred and two hundred and three hundred for all articles within the general bylaws?
That's up to the.
That's up to the selectmen.
I I can, I can probably clarify that. The way the law works is, it's typically bylaw, regulation, mass general law, that's the hierarchy. So in the case of that, my state building code has something else, so that's how I trump the twenty dollar fine.
Uh-huh.
If you're referencing mass general law bringing us to state standards, then I would believe that mass general law would now trump all the other
Mm-hmm.
fines that we have in our bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
Only, only if the mass general law was stronger than
Right, right.
A current regulation.
Right, exactly, you say, you can take the most stringent.
You take the most.
So then why can't we find a hundred dollars if mass general law is stronger than existing?
Because we haven't adopted that verbatim, we referenced it.
Uh, like C M Rs, right, okay.
For the C M Rs, we did adopt a hundred dollar fine for the 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 food, the tobacco, no, not tobacco, food, tanning, um, body art, how, minimum housing and swimming pool, we adopted a hundred dollar fine, and I think that's what happened, when they took this from here to there.
They cut and paste a lot.
They cut and paste and put tobacco in there with timeframes and, um, we really have to go through this, but first, most importantly, the tobacco first, if that way it has to be.
Yeah. Yeah.
So this way you can do your inspections and move on.
I'd like to, at this point, I think, ask the board, do we, we want this out of the general bylaws, correct? We want it as a tobacco reg, so when we come to amend it in the future, we don't have to go to town meeting.
Exactly.
Absolutely should be.
But as long as we're using non criminal disposition tickets.
Was that me?
No.
I did that on purpose, you knocked that, you knocked that over.
As long as we're issuing non criminal disposition tickets.
Okay.
Your non criminal disposition bylaw has to be up to state law.
Okay.
Then we can go forward, and you can go above and beyond, which is what we did in, uh, I think our, our, in the regulation, we're a two year instead of everything in the state is twelve months.
Okay.
And we're at two years, and that's, that's okay.
So.
Because we didn't know that this was a mess.
Right, Kevin though?
Yeah, when I was speaking to Selectmen Zographus.
But you don't wanna listen to him.
Well, because you were trying to help.
Then we, then I, yeah, I emailed you and.
So I, from what my understanding is, I I concur, if you wanna actually use the 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 non criminal dispositions, you have to adopt the bylaw. The question I have, though, you referenced eliminating written warning.
Mm-hmm.
Who, uh, whose advice, I, 'cause I've never seen what you can find on the first offense.
Uh, the tobacco says.
State law, state law.
If you sell to a, if you sell to a minor, first offense is a hundred dollars.
On tobacco.
Yeah. So just the. In in the state law.
Yeah.
That's why I said, they need to do some work on this, 'cause we can't make a hundred, two hundred, three hundred for everything, I don't think.
Right. No, we can't, no, we can't, that, that, 'cause that would, that would conflict with other, which is, which is to your point, so.
That's up to the Board of Selectmen. Yeah.
Hmm.
I feel needs to have our own stuff with the tobacco regulations, you know, square everything.
Okay, right, that's, that's my feeling.
Right.
Yeah, abso- absolutely should be.
Yeah, and and we do, the problem is, we're issuing non criminal disposition tickets, and and there's nothing wrong with that. Half the state issues non criminal disposition tickets.
Right.
The problem is that your non criminal disposition bylaw references the wrong things.
Uh-huh.
So it's not, uh, tobacco regulation that's wrong, it's not building, it's not food that's wrong, it's this, just this piece of paper.
Just that section.
It's just that section.
Okay, so I guess where this board is left at now, do we wanna accept the recommendation of Attorney Wilson and not find people until this messes, give them a warning first?
Well, I think before we get, before we get there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before we get to there, the board, I think, should ask, and I don't know whether you do that through an email or through a, a letter, or what the formality is with board to board politics. The Board of Health needs to ask the Board of Selectmen to act on cleaning this thing up. In, if, if only to
Absolutely, thank you.
Bring it up to state law and eliminate all the tobacco warnings.
Board of Selectmen are aware of it right now.
Yeah, so we, you know.
Right, but do you need a formal request for that from the Board of Health?
Uh.
To get that on an agenda?
I'm sure we're, we're, we're gonna at least discuss it, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and just so you know, Selectmen Goulart and I, so Chairman Taylor is new, but Selectmen and Goulart, Selectmen Goulart and I have known that this has needed to be fixed for quite a while,
Mm-hmm.
especially when we started the policy manual, and then it was obvious that there was some sort of conflict
Right. Mm-hmm.
between various different things, um, so, yeah, we have no choice but to fix it, because, because it's, it's, the waters are a bit muddy in terms of
Okay.
um, warning or fine, or, um, and so in terms of having some sort of, um, consistent policy, regulation, bylaw, whatever you wanna call it, um, that makes sense for businesses and for people going forward, I think it needs to be fixed simultaneously.
Right, but it doesn't need to be, what I, what I'm saying is, you don't need to address
Mm-hmm.
tobacco, food, building, whatever, the plumbing, whatever, animals. All they need to do is fix this non criminal disposition.
Mm-hmm.
So, that everybody who's issuing non criminal disposition is in compliance.
Yeah, and exists.
So this non criminal disposition doesn't have to say anything about tobacco or food or.
Yeah, I don't think it should, I think that, that's the thing, exactly.
It should, it should just be non criminal disposition, and if you look up twenty one D in the mass general law, you should have the language here.
Well, not really.
Why not? Why not?
'Cause I have a copy of it.
If I remember correctly, though, this is pretty similar.
It it's sort of, it, let me read to you what it says.
I think this is too many, too many all.
Well, I know they added the word, our town added the word regulation, 'cause we adopted those C M R regulations.
Correct.
That's why, that, that, section two on this one was added, and added the word regulation.
It said, it is, there's no progressive dollar amount in in uh twenty one D. And the page I gave in these guys is the this third sentence before the bottom, where it says, uh, such specific sum of money not exceeding three hundred dollars as the town shall fix as penalty for violation of the ordinance.
So.
It doesn't ag- address progressive fines.
So if the uh bylaw, I guess we'll call it a bylaw, is uh stricter than the state law, correct me if I'm wrong, then we would be going with that.
Yeah, but that's why it's only three hundred, 'cause that's all the state allows.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Well, on a non criminal disposition.
Uh-huh.
Right.
Right. So there's nothing wrong with that?
I know, I'm not saying there is.
Oh, okay, so, so Mister Chairman, the only thing I would wanna add, and I know I came in midstream, so my apologies, but
if tobacco doesn't require a verbal or written warning as such, and this bylaw is gonna cover more than just tobacco, we don't wanna start off with a hundred dollar fine on some of the other violations that we're going to be citing. So, if you eliminate that written warning from there, how will that affect other enforcement actions that fall under that?
I think you're gonna have to define which articles you want to be a hundred, two hundred and three hundred.
Yeah, because the, because the ones that we adopted were at a hundred, the, like the ones I mentioned, the swimming pool, body art, um, minimum housing.
No, well.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Okay.
Okay, so, whatever you just read on the non, out of the non criminal disposition, do you even have to address a structure, or do, does it just say not to exceed three hundred, 'cause that's what non criminal is?
Okay, yeah.
Right, three hundred.
Not, yeah, so if you took all this whole basic fine schedule completely and just added the non criminal disposition language.
Yeah.
It doesn't affect, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the fine schedule, it just says that it can't be more than three hundred, which is what, that's what non criminal is.
Yeah, so it wouldn't exceed three hundred, they have to think, well, I guess.
And then all of the, but then all of the other.
A lot of it's progressive.
But, right, but that's okay, as long as it doesn't exceed three hundred.
Right.
But the goal is, the goal is, of course, on compliance like that, the, oh, the goal is always compliance. You're only using those non criminal disposition fines as a way to get compliance.
Oh, yeah.
So you're not looking to just, uh.
Right, right. The problem with not defining a progressive amount is you can't leave it in the inspector's hands to pick a number, we don't have that authority.
Yeah.
No, no, you wouldn't though, you wouldn't though, because in your bylaw, you're saying that your your enforcement is going to be by non criminal disposition.
Right.
Under non criminal disposition, mass general law, section twenty one D, which is a twenty one D non criminal disposition ticket, you can't exceed three hundred dollars.
Right.
But all of the other, all those other things, building, food, they're all their own either state regulations that you're enforcing or town regulations. They are not town bylaws.
And they each have their number, so it's, there's some that say, in the housing code, if I'm correct, ten dollars a day, what is it?
Right.
Okay.
Two, ten or twelve dollars.
You're listed.
It wouldn't exceed, it wouldn't exceed a three hundred.
So you would defer to your schedules that are listed in your regulation or such.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, I I get it.
And that doesn't need to be outlined in your bylaw.
I understand.
All your bylaw needs to say is that you're enforcing, that you're using non criminal disposition.
Mm-hmm, as enforcement.
As enforcement, so this whole section would come up.
Yep.
And that way it defers to the regulation, which is easier to modify as the state regs change or the county is.
It defers to the regulation.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So.
Right.
So when we issue, when we issue non criminal disposition tickets, we, on the violation section of the ticket, you cite the regulation that's being violated and the section of the regulation that's being not violated, not that it's a non criminal disposition.
Right.
So Jimmy's right, the, the, the fine schedule should not even be here.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Tim's always right.
Yeah, that's good, thanks for coming.
No, I'm not.
Well, that's why we missed the Paul River.
I know you don't, but we got him.
I tried to get Chris Costa here tonight, too.
Now, to conclude this drawn out conversation, I suppose, um, Attorney Wilson has said, his recommendation is to give a warning
Mm-hmm.
uh, up until the time this is corrected.
Right.
Um, even though uh tobacco regs are something else, but that's okay. Um, and he also said it's up to this board to make the decision whether to find or not to find.
Mm. Right.
So that's where I'm at right now.
Okay.
I think we need to act on that question.
It's also up to you, also up to you whether you want me to, I don't, when is town meeting in the fall?
Yeah. I know, I I actually think, depending on when that is, if you did your inspections and then held off before those compliance checks.
On the compliance checks.
So this way we wouldn't be setting up that precedence. So this way we wouldn't be setting up that precedence where if somebody said, hey, I watched the video a year ago, you gave so-and-so break.
Right. Right, yeah, so so we can continue with our inspections, that's not an issue, and we can hold off
Yeah, you have to.
That state law is the state law. Yeah.
compliance checks until
Okay.
Yeah.
July, well, no.
With any with any of these uh non-criminal dispositions, you can always appeal anyways.
August, whatever you whatever you mean. Right.
So.
Okay with that?
I'm doing that.
Okay, okay with that, okay.
Yeah.
So the board of Selectmen just needs to vote to remove the basic fine schedule?
Um.
They need to vote to amend your this article
Yeah.
to go with whatever the language is on the state non-criminal.
Do we need to state that specifically?
It's right here.
Mm-hmm.
It's in here.
Mm-hmm.
But it shouldn't say anything that's not in here.
Mm-hmm.
It should be strictly non-criminal disposition, national law, chapter forty, section twenty-one D. And that's all that should be here. So if there are words in here that are not in the state, then they need to come out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then all of this.
It's two pages, it's two pages long, it's a lot of talking in circles, but um it's there.
It's right here, right?
Well, it's a state-written thing, that's one.
That's right.
That's right.
I got fourteen books of that.
Yeah. I have I have one for every community there.
Okay. So that's our decision, I I suppose uh we could we could get a motion to con- confirm that that uh
Okay.
uh until such time the bylaw is corrected, uh the first offense will be a warning.
Okay. Um in the meantime, we're gonna need to know when they've approved that
Motion. Okay.
adjustment to this and when the town meeting is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I will I'll.
Don't we know when the town meeting is in the fall?
No. It's usually sometime in October.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then you have to wait for the attorney general's office to approve it.
To approve it, right.
Yeah, so this could be a year.
Okay.
But is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, motion made and second and any other discussion, I think we've had anybody, any more discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, okay, that carries.
Okay, so so now that that's in the works, it's gonna be corrected, it's gonna go to town meeting, it's gonna be approved by the attorney general.
Right.
Um I would like to have a conversation whether we do it in July, August, I don't know what your summer meeting schedule is, with the board and either Attorney Wilson or Attorney Sabara on moving away from non-criminal.
Okay.
For penalty in the regulation. And then while we're at it, we can talk about all the other things that have come up.
I think we're gonna be meeting twice a month for quite a while.
Okay.
Um.
Second, second and fourth.
Second and fourth Wednesday.
Okay.
It is just.
A lot.
A lot. Good answer.
It's a lot, well, for so long.
Lot going on.
Uh Mister Ag, yeah, building commissioner, I'm sorry, are we all set?
We are.
Okay, I'm one of one. We had public im- I mean uh inspectors' reports.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna give you an opportunity to go kind of going back and forth here.
Okay, sure. Um so the only thing I have to report uh that comes to mind is the request by your board to do a well-being check on the property on um Elm Street. And I've been by on numerous occasions, there's no one living in the trailer which was vacated uh quite some time ago. And although I've seen a car there on one occasion, I can't get into the house, no one's answering the door. So um I haven't noticed that the car moves, I'm hoping that the car has just left and left there.
The white one?
Yeah.
The white S U V, I saw that today.
But I'm going to um I'm gonna continue with my stops over there and and follow up and if any progress or anything changes, I'll let the board know.
If it's out of the way, I'll keep an eye, if the car doesn't move, I go right by there.
No, it's no. No, I I'm we have houses being built on Elm Street, so I'm up there quite often.
Okay.
Um but what I don't know, and the question that came to mind when I visited the site, is what I don't know is how many septics are on that property.
Okay.
Because there's a house up front and then there's the trailer out back. I know the septic in back was failed. So uh I'm gonna ask Roz to dig out a copy of the Title Five report and I'll take a look at it and see if we could determine if there's more than one septic, if they were sharing a septic.
Okay.
Uh cause that'll make a determination once we figure out what's going on there, so.
Okay.
Other than that, um I know that you're gonna adjust fees, uh if you haven't done that already.
Two. Well, we're gonna work on it some more tonight.
All right, then I'll stick around, that's all right.
Okay, after Pat Gales, we can go back to that.
Yeah.
Marilyn, thank you for coming, unless you wanna say.
Um um you nobody told me you were gonna talk about adjusting fees, you're gonna adjust fees, I'll stay too.
All right, all right, you you're welcome to stay.
Okay.
Well, well, Marilyn's here though, didn't we have someone that was requesting uh for the next meeting, um?
It's a party.
Oh, yes, um and we were gonna talk about the vape, the smoke shop.
That's a different.
Yes, okay.
It's not on here, right?
That's not on here, though, right?
I was just gonna say with Mar- Marilyn here.
No, it's about it, we can talk about it.
Um Roz, if you could email me, if it's not on the agenda for tonight, if you could email me the night it is, and I will come back.
Okay.
And I will be able to give you
Uh June, yeah.
a list of the violations in all of the communities that they are inhabiting.
Oh, okay.
That'll be helpful.
Do you wanna put that on June seventh?
Sure.
I it's what I had it, but when he said Marilyn was coming.
Is that the second Wednesday?
No, we're doing second, second I.
Oh, I just thought it was every two weeks, so it would be the fourteenth, okay.
Yes.
First one is either on the first?
So second and fourth.
Uh. First is a Thursday.
Remind me on the last week, last week of June, I'm on vacation.
Okay.
Second.
So yeah, fourteenth.
Fourteen and twenty-eight.
Fourteenth, yeah, okay.
I'm looking at the clock, I I mean at the challenge.
Okay. So you wanna stick around?
I I.
You're welcome to stay.
I I'll stay until we talk about tobacco regulations, please.
Okay, um Pat will be right with you, you're gonna be next.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is a good time to bring up an issue uh Selectman Taylor is looking at, there's a meeting coming up on May thirtieth, Jim?
Yes.
May thirtieth at three P M regarding uh situation down at Park Ave and Pleasant and all of that. If you two can make it, fine, if not, it's gonna be here, May thirty at three P M. I suppose you're gonna you're gonna be there, right, so. Uh we'll be talking about many things, David Gay's gonna be there and be giving us legal advice, so uh hopefully we'll be able to figure out what we're gonna do.
Are you meeting here or on Park Ave?
It'll be upstairs.
Uh she's Selectman James, Selectman James.
So Karen will be post.
So you're gonna need to post that for us, just in case either one of these two can make it.
In case our.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a joint meeting, I saw.
You said three P M, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
If uh I mean all of you are welcome, but I think Inspector Bernardo, you have an experience experience down there, it'd be nice if you could make it. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
We actually had a woman in today who was upset about building permit.
I know, I know.
Oh, okay, great.
Um we'll take care of Mrs. Gales uh next for the representing.
Yeah. I'm here for the night, pal.
Representing, you're with us tonight, cause we're talking about two or four whole birth tests.
Oh, okay.
Um Pat, why don't you come up, or we can sit up here.
Oh, okay.
How's that? Uh Patty Gales, this is Kevin Bernardo, we meet you in Baton Rouge if you don't know.
Hi, you're. Hi, how you doing?
All right, she's representing friends of Knighton Library. And uh we're gonna be talking about Taste of Knighton, uh we've had it in the past, and uh she has a request for the board.
Um we've had the Taste of Knighton for four years in a row, and then last year we had to cancel for lack of vendor that would've been our fifth year. Which is re- really kinda sad, cause it is our major fundraiser. Our concern is when we read the directive from December fourteenth is that um all of the outside vendors have to have applied for their own permit um from the town and and provide evidence of liability insurance, which the liability insurance is fine, but the evidence of a a permit for each vendor. In the past, what we did is we got one permit and everyone worked under that food permit and the fee was waived by the board.
And then each person, um each establishment provided their own uh certificates.
Yeah, they it's, yeah, they gave their service safe and their liability and their allergen certificates, um
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We actually send them a letter that tells them what they need to do um that includes that the town health inspector, and this one says, and Selectmen request copies of your current service safe, your service safe, your allergen awareness and a current certificate of liability, and we can add, you know, that the talent of Knighton is included on that. We also um remind them that they have to use hairnets, cleaning materials as needed, and um supply um nutrition information labels if they're pre-packaging their foods.
Correct.
You know, cause one year um one of the vendors did that, you know, she thought it would be an easier thing to do. So, you know, we're trying to keep everything, you know, according to, you know, what we have here. Um our our main concern was the price of the permits and how we would work on it. Um we have four vendors so far this year that indicated that they might be interested in joining us if we do have it. Um we're working on contacting other ones, unfortunately, most of them are from out of town, um Knighton has a very small selection.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um all the vendors are encouraged to provide a small taste, and we've tried to define a small taste, some of them get big portions, it's like, you know, a meal itself. The cost is generally ten, ten dollars for twenty tickets, and then each ticket is worth fifty cents. So they the vendor sets a price per unit, so if their serving save, a cup of soup or a taste of soup, they might say is a dollar fifty. So that would cost the customer three tickets. Um we ask them to give us um fifty percent and encourage them to give us more, you know, all of it or seventy-five percent, but they to give us at least fifty percent. So that's our that's our take, and they get fifty percent. Um so if they have a, and it's all by jars, if the um we have um volunteers handle the tickets. They put the tickets in, we count them afterwards and split them, so if there's a hundred dollars, they get fifty, we get fifty. Um we have put up uh you know, an allergen sign, we use this one before, but we certainly can use anything else.
Each inspection went well, they 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 were all well aware of what was going on.
Yeah, yeah.
You had Alice's was there, Almeida's at one point.
Right.
Last year, of course, was canceled, but.
Right, yeah, and they were.
Some establishments.
Yeah, uh and they all were, you know, very aware of it and they, you know, participated well, so I mean we didn't have any problems. So but it's just the cost of the permit, I guess.
We have a copy of that directive.
I guess the question is, uh since there's different um events like this in town, the township, how is that being? Same idea, they have multiple vendors, one permit, or each each one has their own?
No.
Each vendor pays the permit fee, but what they've done in the past is they all were under the umbrella of Michelle Anderson, and she sent me her allergen and her service safe today. And I got back to her and said, I need allergen and service safe for each vendor, you, she's like, I'm on premises, I'm there twenty-four seven, I'm I need each vendor's certifications.
But what what about payment then?
Um what happens is the lions pay for the permits, and then when the vendors come in, they reimburse the lions. So each vendor does pay, but it's for profit, this isn't fund rate or anything.
Yeah, I I'm just trying to figure out all these different establishments.
Hmm, yeah, each one of them pay.
Uh since we're since we're touching base on, I just wanna be consistent, the best of the lagging, how do we do that? They had a few of uh, they had two vendors.
And each one got a permit.
Several.
Yeah, provided they're.
But that wasn't, that was.
That's because it was not, they were from outside and they weren't nonprofit.
Yeah, okay, so that's what we have to feel the pro.
Exactly.
See, I also know that the historical society wants to do some things too, you know, along um extre- serving strawberry shortcakes, um and the nonprofits end up with a a problem, this is this case of.
Yeah, this is, we actually talked about nonprofit uh at our last meeting.
Yeah. Okay, the um taste actually is is different because it's different vendors coming in, and because we're asking them to donate to the friends, you know, um we're just afraid if we ask them to pay for the, we can't reimburse them the thirty-five.
Cost.
Um and that that would just put them over the top of what they could do for a donation.
Kevin, do you give seasonal for this?
The only thing we have right now, we've been we were, we've been discussing the the permit fee, the only thing we discussed so far with seasonal was farmer's markets. That's uh the way it's written in the code, it's uh whatever the food cost, or whatever the permit fee is, you divide that by the number of weeks you're gonna operate. So if you're a hundred dollar fee for food establishment, you're gonna operate ten weeks, your permit fee is ten bucks to do a farmer's market. But we're talking uh farmer's market that has um different things besides the fruit, um so um meat and stuff like that.
I guess uh.
We're talking about the, it was nonprofit, so did it reduce it?
Yeah, I think I'd like to find out if if it says rules, regulations, and procedures are on full force in effect. Did this follow the procedure to get into the Board of Health rules and regs, I wonder? Such as a public hearing or?
I'm not certain.
They might've just came up with this out of the blue?
Yeah, I think no, I think that's that's Selectmen Goulart drafted this, after different events.
I I don't.
Okay.
We had we had some issue with uh people with bake sales and whether it was a potluck event, whether it wasn't, see, there's this
It's all kinds of.
The the state has put out an advisory for potluck events, if it's a nonprofit, um
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
bake sale, obviously the Board of Health's not gonna go to everybody's house and inspect their properties or their kitchens.
Right, right.
So the understanding is they can do that, but they have to post signage saying this has not been inspected by the local Board of Health.
Right.
Uh you have to list the allergens, um so there's things they have to put in place, and I think that's part of this, some of this stuff here.
Well, we're working on fees now as as they mentioned, and is it, do you have a take on it?
Yeah.
Hmm. Um.
Don't you think I hate the.
Another town, yeah, no, another town I, oh, in Marshfield, I mean, we had a band similar to this where it was a fundraiser for either a town entity or a nonprofit. Um and there were multiple vendors coming, we actually have one that uh Chamber of Commerce does. Um and maybe like a half dozen food vendors supplying food, and I think they get like just enough money basically to cover their actual expenses of that food cost. We just get, make them get one blanket permit, um.
Yeah, fundraising's a big taste, you know, the cabbies, I don't know how that one, I don't know anything about how they do it.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Well, my take is, and I, as I talked to you on the phone, and I'll be public about it.
Yeah.
The you are, you exist to support the Town of Knighton Library.
Right.
Which is a public entity funded by taxpayer dollars.
Right.
Now, your fundraiser contributes to the library certain things they may need.
Right, what we generally use our um funds for is to support their museum program pass, um.
Mm-hmm. So if you didn't use your funds, it would come from taxpayer dollars, or they'd be looking to do that, right?
Yeah.
So my take was, since it is a public entity funded with taxpayers' dollars, it just doesn't make any sense to me to take away your profit and put that on the taxpayer.
Right, yeah, yeah, I hear.
That's my take.
The other point, and I I if I missed it, I apologize, is you're asking the vendors for fifty cents on the dollar.
Right.
Well, profit margin in restaurant is not that gratuitous, so they're barely covering the costs of what it takes to supply the the materials. So they're basically doing it for the advertisement, we understand that, so they're really, it's not, it's really not profitable.
Yeah.
Uh you know, maybe if the library just put two or three sentences together that this is what they expect from the vendors, that would give the board the inclination to say, okay, maybe we can waive the fee.
It looks like everything is presented correct as far as the serve safe uh certificates, uh they follow all the serve safe rules and regs and
Yes, yeah.
And and they'll all have their own liability insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
But obviously we don't want the town to hold the liability on this.
Right, right. I think I do.
Are you doing an inspection anyway?
I still do the inspection, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you missed one year.
I did, Joe Calo did one for us, I was, I think it was on a cruise, it was it was kinda like a toss-up, Tyson Diane.
So I I I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh.
So is it.
A taste of cruise, oh, and we lost them.
What is going to explain the matter of whether we charge them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the difference is it's a public entity, and you don't have a problem paying for one permit, right?
No.
Okay.
One that comes along, only because I I think that's only fair, and we are sending an inspector, whether it's Kevin or Joe, but we live up there, we have to pay them, ask how to pay them, so.
Just wanna give us sufficient time to check all their paperwork.
Yeah, usually, you know, Roz and I work very closely together on it um in the past, you know, whenever we get the information or who's missing one.
Okay.
So absolutely, absolutely. Um so absolutely, absolutely, so we'll just pay for one permit.
So I guess we should have a motion to waive the requirement uh from memo dated uh December fourteen, twenty sixteen uh for a permit for everybody, just one permit.
On this particular event, yeah.
For this event, yeah?
For this year.
Yeah.
For this year.
Right, it it yeah, and it's always been done just each and every year.
Okay, alright.
You know.
And it's like September, you said?
Now you got now you got us in trouble.
Yes. September eighth.
Right. I'm sorry, the motion was to waive permit fee?
No.
Was to waive.
Waive the individual permits from the vendors and have one blanket permit.
How could we waive the fee? I'm gonna go for zero dollars.
So the motion was for one permit for this event?
Blanket.
To cover all the vendors.
To cover all the vendors.
What's the permit fee?
For this event.
Is it thirty five, Roz?
Yep.
For this year. That just that just covers the inspector.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta give us a little bit.
Alright, I'll give you a little bit.
Okay.
I have to ask.
The inspe- the inspector without us here, it's me or um uh uh Mr. Caballo.
I I I do.
Uh-huh.
Will will um put that in there on this payroll, so.
Okay.
Means it tends, you know, whoever, whether it kev- Kevin or whoever, looking at all the paperwork, making sure everything's aligned and that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
You got quite a few vendors coming up there. So I'll I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I second that one.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, uh any further discussion? Seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, please.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, I mean three thieves are in mind, 'cause we're like, we're gonna do.
Yeah, well.
And hopefully we can get all of our vendors um.
Yeah.
Well, that's not gonna scare them away because they probably would be losing money if they had to pay a thirty five dollar fee.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, right.
You know, so.
So, right.
You have a number already?
We have four.
Yeah, I think I keep plugging away.
You know. So we'll keep plugging away.
And just to be clear, so since we're on cable, this is due to the fact that it's a public entity
Mm-hmm.
funded through taxpayer dollars. So this is not gonna apply all the time to each and every case.
Yes, just for the
So, you know.
For the friends of the library this time only.
Uh we have to look at each thing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you just get us basically if you send something to the vendors, your expectations for the donation in return? Could you just get us a copy of that as well?
Oh, alright, alright, a copy of the letter?
Yeah.
Um yeah, 'cause we'll update the letter and then it's gonna go out this year.
Yeah.
And we'll give you that, okay?
Yeah, it'd be good to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Do you have any food trucks in town?
We have two, three food trucks.
Three at the moment.
Do you license ones from out of town to work in town?
No.
Okay, let's talk about perk tests.
No, not now.
Uh next article, review, discuss that, perk test, uh two or four holes, test holes. Prior to two thousand six, only two holes were required on a uh preparation test. Uh that changed to four holes in two thousand six, which would be the the other two would be the reserve holes. Um.
Yes, so I wasn't.
Now, the situation we have is that uh there are many people, so the perk test supposedly is good forever, 'cause the land doesn't change supposedly, so they say. Um.
Yeah, well, th- sometimes we we'll dig an observation hole just to verify, yeah.
Well, that's quick, yeah. Um so we have applications coming in. And they have been coming in for a while, I don't know how many are left out there with the two holes, people looking for a building permit. And the town engineer in his comments, when he reviews it, states emphatically that four holes are needed according to state law. So, that being said, uh we're looking, our discussion will be what direction are we going in uh going forward uh concerning the two or four holes. Now, I don't know if you got my email, I guess he did, if uh if there's other communities around that have grandfathered uh the two hole perk in.
I don't know of any.
No.
I actually just looked at a plan today that fell under the same category that um they had done perks in ninety six for new construction, they did the two holes, two perks, and then nothing got done with the property. Then about a year ago, they the developer finally said, I'm gonna build some houses. And uh they were forced to go out and do another, two holes, one perk to satisfy
Yeah.
the state requirements.
Okay.
On 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 repairs, on repairs, yes, the two holes. But on new construction, ab- absolutely four holes.
Okay. Let me ask all three of you since Jim also was familiar with this. If we were to approve a a two hole perk test, do we open ourselves up to some type of liability if something fails?
Mm-hmm.
Probably, right?
Yeah, because what you're saying is that you're allowing that property to be uh developed. And down the road, when that system fails, the whole intent of the reserve area with the additional perk is to make sure they can site a repair on the property.
Okay.
If we have inconsistent soils on a property, then you can't move or relocate the septic system. So now we may have a property where you can't cite an on-site septic system or an alternative septic system, which is extremely expensive. So.
So we have a house there with a failed system and it may not perk anywhere else.
We.
It's possible, it's possible.
Pretty much, yeah. That that's where our liabilities would come in.
I don't know legally if we could have any recourse monetarily over it, but you certainly have a situation where we have a house that's hab- inhabited and then we have a public health problem. Because we have a failed septic and we have a problem citing a repair on the property. It's also a pretty good hardship for a homeowner if they can't get it to perk and we gotta do an IA, which is an alternative system, it's extremely expensive.
Yeah. It'd be thirty five to fifty plus thousand dollars one month.
How much?
An alternative system, fifty plus, a thousand.
Yeah.
Real.
With maintenance programs, well.
Yeah, and then you're looking at over a thousand a year in maintenance and monitoring and.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
The only uh the only thought I have is if the system was designed, parked and designed with the two holes, you know, plan submitted and approved with a permit on file prior to two thousand six and has not been instructed, I think that would have to be grandfathered only because there's an approved plan on file.
Right, right.
I would agree. The problem with most of them coming into town is there was no plan that was drawn, so that's the issue.
Right, the the perks and
Right.
I can't see it being a hardship. A hardship would be if the lot was already um occupied and there was, you know, but this this is a new lot, there's nobody occupying it.
Yeah.
You know, if you can't afford it, you don't build it.
This is very simple.
Right.
This is very simple, just a observation and another perk, that's it.
Yeah. I actually think our our engineer, our review engineer is actually doing the town a justice by by citing that.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause he's uh he's keeping everything the way it's supposed to be. And I've not yet in the six years that I've been here see a plan that was approved prior to oh six come in. Um they may be out there, I don't know, but.
I do any like put it out there 'cause just in case.
Yeah. But you're 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 absolutely right, I would agree, right.
Yeah.
As everybody's feeling that, yeah, I I think to be on the safe side, go y- you can't go wrong going with the law, which
Right.
the law is on our side. I don't even think we need to act on this, 'cause we're not making any exceptions, we'll just go with the law. If it doesn't happen.
Um it doesn't speak.
So if it doesn't have enough holes, we'll make them do two more.
So if they they do construction houses. Well, i- he's gonna review the plans anyways.
Right, yeah.
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 Gentleman, I'm sorry, I'm being summoned.
That's okay.
Okay.
I do have the fee schedule, the back page is what we had and what we discussed the changes, the front page are the changes.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can just write right on one of these for me. Um Kevin just touched up farmer's market, we wording for how you wanna do that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I did put wording in here that we discussed about half a fee for n- um nonprofit
In half of the.
Nonprofit, yeah.
Okay.
And that they needed to have the five oh one C.
Yes.
Yeah, we need that.
Um Tom, could we call? And I think other than that.
Yeah, we'll do the uh the yes and.
Good. That would be great if you wanted to.
I got one.
Yeah.
Okay, let's. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's talk about permit fees. Next item, out of order. This uh under role business. Is to uh continue the review of permit fees. It's so narrow, I I I'm not much for structure, but to get get it done is.
Oh, yeah. I don't have a problem. No, I can just say my comment.
Alright.
Go ahead, yep, Joe, go ahead.
Yes.
Uh the only suggestion I have is there are some fees on there that aren't covering the cost of the inspector visit and the secretarial duties associated with it. Um one of the things that I did when I came to town with my department is to make sure that we covered the costs, and that's why we run an agreement. So um uh one in particular comes to mind is a uh septic tie-in, a sewer tie-in for communal septic, which is only twenty five dollars currently. Uh that's exactly what we pay the inspector. And two other bodies in town home, you know, touch that, Rosalind and the town accountant. So we're certainly not covering the costs.
That's not even on here. It's not on this one, no.
Not even on here.
No.
Is it on your building one?
Uh maybe it's just one of those understood fees, I don't know.
That's the thing, part part of the trouble, I think, what we wanted.
Right.
Well, should be added to this.
So sewer sewer tie-in?
Should be asked. Uh uh a communal septic or shared septic tie-in, yep, uh my.
Actually, none of our uh Title Five
I know.
related fees are even on here.
It must be a different page then.
It must be a separate page.
Yeah, I think that's it's one of the things we wanna do is just clean everything up, so
Uh. Yeah, right.
anything that's actually related to border health or is a border health fee is on one schedule instead of selecting a building.
The other thing I do the other thing I did is I I consolidated some of them, if some of them can be pulled together just by saying a different name.
Yeah.
Then you 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 get rid of half a page of, you know, fees, so.
Yeah, it was probably that uh that.
Um, right. Right, so. What I what I found that in a fee any anywhere between fifty and si- uh sixty five dollars can cover the costs of the inspector's secretarial fees um a- and the account that the accountant processes it, so you know, if you wanna use that as a guide, uh but certainly it's at your discretion, but I think twenty five dollars is far too cheap.
Well, it makes sense because most of our inspectors get twenty five on an inspection.
Right, right.
So.
And our inspectors are slightly underpaid versus surrounding towns. The only comment I'll make to that, 'cause I 'cause we're we we are speaking publicly here, is our inspectors do a lot more work than surrounding towns. So the gross amount is is far more than the surrounding towns are getting paid, so.
Yeah.
So, not like well, I had mentioned, Title Five's not even on here, so we'll have to add this.
Maybe maybe there's a different one, let me uh let me go, I'm gonna go look real quick.
Those those are, yeah.
Thank you.
If you have a.
I have mine if you have one, yeah.
Check it out, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me go look.
This is the one that uh she gave us the first time.
Yeah, that even sure.
Yeah, because it won't even um.
These are where it's like the border health.
No, there is there is no.
I mean, how I mean the cost for new constructions submission, repair, hard tests.
Yeah, ti- a plan review, oh, that's altogether problem.
You know.
Reinspection one.
Anything related to Title Five reports.
No.
Well, they should be on here.
Who does those, yeah, is it uh Jerry Bernard, the Title Five report?
Nobody. I was doing them when I was on the board. Prior to that, they were just all.
People don't have any better than that.
I was I was looking at them when I was on the board.
I can I can if you if the board wants to, I can I can look at them.
Okay.
'Cause some might need a a letter, some might see. Could be, could be.
Yeah, everybody makes, you know, some of them had typos, things like that, you know.
Some could need a w- um a water analysis if there is, there's not too many wells. But um definitely nobody's looking at it.
I don't know where they get that t- where did they get that Title Five people from?
State.
That's what I thought.
They're state licensed and then.
Yeah, so so the inspector will do his report, but they're gonna submit it reviewed later on. 'Cause they're supposed to submit it within thirty days.
But she has it, she just doesn't have it out right now and she's in the middle of taking notes.
I think so.
Um.
We can look at it for the next.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I think I think the fees that come to mind, uh I I kinda know most of them, is uh four hundred for uh new plan review,
This is a.
two hundred for re-review. Um and then the only one, other one that I know of is a re-inspection fee and the one I just told you, um other than.
I'll have her uh email you two what we have.
Yeah.
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 And now we're there, we can look at them on this meeting, so.
Yeah, and then maybe that's sewer tie-ins, you say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need sewer tie-in, you need bottom hole and all the Title Five related inspections, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And ultimately, I think the um the cost of the plan of permit fee should cover cost of review and cost of the inspections associated with the installation of that system.
Okay, yeah.
That's what it's supposed to be.
Right.
Um.
Yeah.
So if I have experts.
I'm not I'm not sure how we do it right now, so.
Yeah, we need to look at that and we'll have to talk to Joe Pacheco and see how much time, you know, he spends on on site for the two inspections.
Right. 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 Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, we're not here to profit, but we gotta run the black and the red, otherwise you're taking taxpaying dollars.
Right. Yeah, but it's not, no.
Hmm.
Doesn't make sense, yeah.
Alright, so we're we're gonna relook at this on uh fourteenth?
Yeah.
Is that what we said?
So, yes, I just wanted to say, any, and I don't know anything about Title Five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know about the paperwork. I mean, I know a little bit about Title Five, but I don't know about the process, the paperwork, how many hands touch the paperwork.
Back or something.
But I can tell you that any Board of Health permit for tobacco, for food, for an event, you have to take into consideration that so s- s- just take my tobacco for as an example, because that's what I know most of.
No, it was a one twenty five.
Okay, so you have to pay for the paper to print the applications, somebody's gotta make sure that there's enough applications. And you're a small town, so you only have seven permits, so it's not a huge thing.
Yeah.
But these are the things you have to take in, because the cost of the permit is supposed to cover all of the costs of processing that permit. So the paper it's printed on, the applications are printed on, the postage to put them in the mail, the time it takes Roz to figure that out. They come back, she's gonna look at them all, she's gonna make sure that they're complete. If they're not complete, she's either gonna send them back, she's gonna make a phone call.
And missing the D O R.
And then, and that, right, and then once they're complete, she's gonna process the paperwork to to create the appli- to create the permit, put it in the mail. You could, you're not, and you're, again, you're paying paper, envelopes, postage, per time. So I don't have an issue with the one twenty five and that's probably an average of the state, but when I come back on the on the fourteenth, I will bring you a copy of the the list that the state has put together that lists what every town, city and town in the cit- in the Commonwealth aces.
That'd be great.
So you can see where you fall
Yeah.
for the size of your community, the number of permits you have. I'll bring that with me next time.
Could you uh just email that to me prior and I'll send it out to them for review?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Because, you know, that way there we can have a idea of uh where we're headed the night of the meeting.
Yep.
And review it in advance and um
Yeah.
that'd be wonderful timing, right?
So, I mean, and you can get I know it's a it's a lot of phone calls to make, but you can find out from Boards of Health in surrounding communities what they what they're, also what they're charging for other things like food permits, the bin permits.
Yeah. We've been looking, I've been looking at the
The food food trucks, yeah.
I've ran a line.
Yeah, I've been looking at the fee schedules, yeah.
The food, food trucks.
Yeah, that the
That's how we came up with this well one.
The other two members kinda felt that for the most part, our fees were pretty much in line. Uh except for a couple, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's important to figure out how much time it takes and whose hands are touching this thing from beginning to end for every permit.
Absolutely.
I know I know a lot of, a lot of towns are starting to go up on the tobacco.
Mm-hmm.
Um you know, a lot of towns are like hundred and now up to two hundred, three hundred.
Tottenham, Tottenham has seventy three permits for a small city. And they charge, they combine their tobacco and their e-cigarette permit, which is what you do here into, it's one permit, but it's two fees and they're three hundred bucks each. For tobacco. Bellingham has twenty eight permits and they combine, so they issue one permit for for tobacco and for e-cigarettes and their permit is four hundred. And they have twenty eight permits. And they're on the higher end.
A lot of towns, a lot of towns are pushing three hundred.
Uh but three hundred, yeah. Yeah, a lot of towns are going up to that, but like I said, you've got seven permits, it's doesn't it's it's a time thing.
Mm-hmm.
And the resources that you have to pay, especially postage.
Mm-hmm. And yes, applying them with regs.
And the regs, a copy of the regs, yeah.
A copy of the regs, yeah. Oh, I know, I
Yeah.
I don't know how you do so many communities. It's good.
And so you want to table this till uh the fourteenth?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment regarding the the food permit fees, food service in the retail store.
Okay.
Um I think probably the food service should be reevaluated. Um I think probably the food service should be reevaluated, um solely because, one, it's difference of twenty five dollars between retail and food service, yet a food service inspection requires significantly more time than a retail.
Yeah.
Food.
Um generally we'll get more complaints regarding food service, also, um if the.
Right. But we require the certifications.
Right, when the state, if, when, um actually finally gets the new food regs out. I believe they are looking to change it, so food service will be inspected more than retail during the year.
Really, so the H one is two twice a year now, they're thinking them up wrong?
What I've been told is they're looking to maybe say keep retail at two, but food service at three. Because they're, you know, they feel it'll help prevent foodborne illness and.
Tighten things up a little bit.
Yeah.
It'll be another.
A lot of things happen in six months.
Another unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
So, it's like people forget things.
Right.
Well, isn't there some kind of regulation in that food service code that there's supposed to be so many inspectors, inspector hours for the number of permits you've got?
Believe it's something in there somewhere. And I know we have to submit a form every year that says this is how many inspections we did, how many hours you spent, how many employees you have, what to do with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have we have to do a recording. Schools, yeah, they wanna know, definitely the schools, um
Right.
we have our reporting every July.
Yeah, but there's something in that food code that says for every so many licensed establishments, you're supposed to have X number of inspectors.
Yeah. Um it says um full-time employees and then it talks about um different ones with the um food safety managers, so the retail ones.
Mm-hmm.
So you, when you're when you're submitting the report, who I was who I was looking at says sees, we'll just say forty establishments and only twenty um food safety managers, cause those are just restaurants, the other ones are little corner stores that sell chips and stuff like that, so you have to document all that.
Right. Yeah, I know, cause we have over six hundred permits in Florida, not including the seasonal and the food trucks.
As they ask the questions of uh any uh how many complaints, how many foodborne illnesses, just it just goes on.
Yeah, but we only have two full-time inspectors, or six hundred permits.
That's that's a lot of ones.
Um
So good for safety.
So I'm not sa- I mean, it does have to go up a huge amount, but I d- I do think there should be a an increase on that, even even twenty five dollars to, if you get twenty five dollars, you pay the inspector another hour to
Okay.
Yeah, and even if we made this change, I think they their renewal would be in August first, so this probably wouldn't kick into effect until, or would have been, I would maybe, you know.
It could it could be effective, but then, but by the time the rules go out and we can s- we could vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Once everything goes through the period, and we can set an effective date of September first to January first, you know, it doesn't, just cause we vote on it to accept it, doesn't mean that it has to go into effect that day, um.
I I would I would I would agree on that one too.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, let me say, I I know enough about Board of Health, but you guys are my left and right hand, so I'm I'm depending on you to, you know, uh
Yeah.
use sound judgment and, you know, if it's if it's logical, then we'll go with it, so.
And. Yeah, the food service is definitely very large, yeah, compared to other towns.
One point five.
Okay. Yeah, that's uh as soon as I get that, I'll send it out to these guys and uh I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me table that to uh to next.
Okay, the last item, which was stormwater permit application. Um we have never had a stormwater application. When I put this on here, I thought we had created one. But what we created was a stormwater permit, like a building permit. So the next meeting, we're going to be approving or not approving the stormwater permit application and the permit itself, so there'll be two. Cause we're go- I'd like to adopt them, so there's at least paper in people's hands, if if somebody wants an application for something, so.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna put that on the fourteenth too.
Do you, excuse me, do you think you'll be approving it that night? Or?
Probably.
Okay, because we do have one, as you're aware, that it's pending, so um it may be ready for the application by that time, so that might work out good for timeline.
Okay. Alright. Wanna do announcements? Oh yeah, sure. Some, oh, you're you're taking notes because you're out, uh you, you wanna do announcements?
I'm uh.
I'm gonna do the recall.
Thank you, I'm gonna go to you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, let's, we can do the food recalls first.
I love these recalls, I kept it on the work.
You wanna do yours and play a dippy those on?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, she she uh this time we printed out a cover page, which pretty much says it all, you just read that cover page.
Oh, perfect.
I used to have to give Patrick the ones he couldn't pronounce the words, but.
Yeah, that's me. So we're just gonna do this part?
Some of these were kinda funny, actually, not funny, but when you hear some of the things that are out there, like this one. There you go, what's that?
Sure, okay, so first recall, Lamb Weston issues allergy alert on undeclared milk and red Robin burgers and bruised crispy onion rings sold in grocery stores. Lamb Weston is recalling fourteen ounces fourteen ounce packages of red Robin burgers and bruised crispy onion rings manufactured by Fry Foods and sold in grocery stores because the product may contain undeclared milk allergen. People who have allergy or severe sensitivity to milk run the risk of serious life-threatening allergic reaction if they consume this product. Second one is Trident Seafoods Corporation recalls frozen multi-grain Alaskan cod due to possible health risks. Trident Seafoods Corporation is issuing voluntary recall of select lots of frozen multi-grain Alas- Alaskan cod net weight twelve ounce, because they may contain small pieces of plastics. Consumption of these products may pose a choking hazard and other physical injury to the mouth.
Okay, thank you, Goodman. Uh my first one is Wang Global Net issues allergy alert on declared eggs, wheat and fish cake, fish ball and fish tofu. Wang Global Net of Munachi, New Jersey is recalling five cases of fish cake, two cases of fish ball, hundred eighty-six cases of fish cake, four cases of fish cake. Item one five seven three one, and three cases of fish tofu, because it may contain undeclared egg and wheat. People who have an allergy or severe sensitivity to eggs and wheat run the risk of serious or life-threatening allergic reaction if they consume these products. The next one is Italian Gluten-Free Food C one issues allergy alert on undeclared egg in Chef Luca's Lasagna Alforno baked cheese lasagna. Italian Gluten-Free Food C L of eighteen ninety-nine Brunswick Avenue, New York, is recalling its fifteen ounce packages of Chef Luca's Lasagna Alforno baked cheese lasagna, use that?
No.
Good.
Make my own.
Because they may contain undeclared egg. People who have allergies to eggs run the risk of serious or life-threatening allergic reaction if they consume these products. Mr. Dennis.
L A Innovative Services is recalling approximately one thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred thirty thousand seventy-one pounds of meat and poultry frozen entree products, which included a non-meat ingredient waffles that was recalled due to listeria. And listeria can cause fever, muscle aches, headache, stiff neck, confusion, um also cause diarrhea and other uh G I symptoms, uh it's an infection that can spread uh beyond the G I tract and can affect mostly older adults, people with weakened immune systems, pregnant women and newborns, um yet still while less common, can still affect people outside these groups. L A Lucky Import and Export Incorporated announced its voluntary recalling L A Lucky brand basil seeds, two point one ounces, due to the presence of salmonella in the packet. Salmonella is an organism which can cause serious and sometimes fatal infections in young children, frail, or elderly people, and others with weakened immune systems.
Thank you, Matt. Uh anybody watching, these are also kept in the Board of Health office, if they're looking for more information on them, those are the basics of the recalls. But if you missed it or wanna find out more, just come onto the Board of Health office, lower level town hall, and they're available for you, for field. Wanna do announcements, if? The Dyton Historical Society will be holding a plant sale on May twenty-seventh from nine A M to two P M at the Dyton Historical Winslow Davis Museum located at twelve seventeen William Street. Naps and historical memorabilia would also be available for sale. If anyone wishes to donate plants, tree, please drop them off on Friday, May twenty-sixth or early on May twenty-seventh. Please label them and leave them by the bulkhead. And next, the Dyton Fire Association will be hosting a touch a truck event on Saturday, June third, eight o'clock A M to two o'clock P M on the grounds of Mannheim, New England. Pre-admission to the event, children can get a close-up look and climb aboard many of the supersized vehicles. Dyton Fire Association will also be collecting donations for the Shiner's Hospital for Children. Also, Mannheim will be hosting a blood drive on Saturday, June third, free pancake breakfast with a blood donation. Be there.
I'll be there.
Be there. Next, the annual town meeting will be held at Dyton Middle School on June fifth, two thousand seventeen, at seven o'clock P M. A special town meeting will be held prior to annual town meeting at six o'clock P M. A copy of the warrants will be mailed to all Dyton residents next week. The Dyton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution has new hours, going forward, the hours will be eight o'clock A M to nine thirty A M. And trash bags, shops disposal containers and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call five zero eight six six nine six four three one for more information. That was that. Okay, do you guys have your uh your job description with you, have you looked at?
You don't.
Oh, you do not, okay. Have you had an opportunity to review it, either one of you?
Did.
What do you think, anything we ought to be adding in there?
This is for the clerical position, right?
Right. I think we're, I think we're pretty much all set.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think last time we touched on it with a few tweaks.
The way it was after the last one. Yep.
And um all right, I just, you know, wanted to make sure that uh would you cha- change or run what she actually does? And 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 some of the things are s- still being done until we get a little bit better organizing, get a a full-time clerical person or pretty much a full-time clerical person, um in the appropriate uh area, she'll be she'll be the one selling the bags and and the tags and all that, all that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of bags, we did, we have ordered, uh they should probably be in this week.
Yeah.
I'm hoping, um it's been two weeks now, if it's not this week, it'll be next week probably for sure. Um the new bags are still thirty-three gallon. We have a different manufacturer because the other one wasn't able to produce the bags, uh.
They're actually cheaper, right, they're less less expensive?
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Um
Oh, they are less expensive.
They were a little bit less expensive, uh they have drawstrings, uh which I think could be a plus, I'm hoping the quality is better than the last bunch that we had. And uh my plan is to get a field rep here at our June fourteenth meeting to talk to us about what they do as far as the the accounting, the delivery, you already got that, right?
Yeah.
So, um I I didn't know this, but they spoke a couple of times to previous Board of Selectmen regarding doing that, it's I spoke to her briefly, but they're gonna give us a presentation, that I I think it's five cents a bag that they they get, uh for doing all the work, we don't have to touch them. That there's no delivery by the street department, the highway department, there's no internal accounting, so it seems to me after our presentation, if it, we have to consider the time everybody is spending touching, counting money, you know, and and the whole process of of bags, I I think, uh if you think about it, they're doing inventories on them and
And store them.
And storing, delivery, you know, so, um if we don't have to touch that, and then I think we actually probably will save money. When somebody comes home with six or seven thousand dollars, it takes some time to count that much money, you know, so, uh anyway, my hope is to get them here next meeting
Definitely. Mm-hmm.
and talk to us about that program. Do you know anything about it, how I know Lakeville, uh you guys?
Um, a free town, we actually uh have this, it's called the Way Zero.
Way Zero, yeah.
Yes, and uses tours, cause I can go.
Yeah, so Way Zero pretty much handles, I think they uh came last year to the town and and tried to uh
Oh, has it nothing?
put their bid in, um but the 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 town sort of liked it, what they had before, but uh this company pretty much um works with the vendors and and you just uh keep your own inventory of uh your numbers there and then you order as needed. But uh it's a good program, the the bags, uh I I like them.
Okay.
And they, yeah, they they mentioned they they come with drawstrings. It's probably a little easier for people to tie.
Kinda like, kinda makes sense, if somebody looked into it, you know, out there.
Yeah. I think from from a public, from a public health standpoint, I think the drawstrings are better than trying to finagle with the ties and and just pull cord.
Uh, we're still doing the same amount, we're gonna have the fifteen, uh fifteen for the ten bags, right?
My help keeps them clear as well.
Same money.
Yeah, same money, yeah, probably the same.
Yeah. Yeah, the cost, the cost won't go up, yeah.
Um, the uh price. For twist ties or ears or uh drawstrings are all the same price.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh the ears are the worst I've ever, I've ever decided, I won't say anything, but I don't like them.
Yeah, but that's fairly new, the with the with the ears.
Yeah, they were the, they were, last year was the first year we did a, something like that, so.
We uh wanna make an update on that, I don't know if you, you guys have probably already seen that. It's just another piece of car performance I got, uh regarding uh procedures now for what they're attempting to do with Title V inspections, have you seen it?
I'll have to take a look at it.
Don't know if it's guy either, huh?
This is quite the uh interesting issue, yeah.
I know, it's high-tech.
Let's see.
There you go. Think we've counted all of it.
Gonna get the two-sided moment. If I remember the email I got from Nancy, I believe, on committee.
Yeah, I think it came from M A M A H P.
This is review. Yeah. She was listed as the, this area's uh rep, I believe.
I don't ever see that I I read it, as much as I could understand it, I just don't ever see it happening.